Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our public hearing this afternoon. Before we get to the public hearing, I do want to announce that Councilmember Sales will be virtual and Councilmember Main Kennedy Emergency in her district and will also be virtual with us this afternoon. This afternoon, we have a public hearing on the FY26 Capital Budget Supplemental Appropriations to the FY25 Capital Budget and Amendments to the FY25-230 Capital Improvements Program for County Government, Montgomery County Public Schools, Montgomery College, Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, Washington Suburban Transit Commission, the Revenue Authority Housing Opportunities Commission, Municipality and State Projects, and the FY26-231 CIP for WSSC Water. Committee work sessions on the FY26 Capital Budget Supplemental Appropriations to the FY25 Capital Budget and Amendments to the FY25-230 Capital Improvement Programs will be scheduled through the end of March. Each registered speaker has three minutes. You will hear a beep when your time is up, and we appreciate you abiding by that. Our first panel today consists of Mayor Monique Ashton, Robert Nelson, Barbara Falcino, Melissa Whedon Hofer, and Mark Schreiber, and we'll start with the mayor.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President Stewart, Vice President Juwondo, as well as members of the county council. My name is Monique Ashton, Mayor of Rockville, and on behalf of our entire council, we thank you for this opportunity. We respectfully ask that you support the following MCPs capital projects. We are very concerned that the recommended CIP removes $3 million in out years expenditures for the Twinbrook Elementary School major capital project, and it delays construction funds and the completion date to a future CIP, which the county council to ensure that the project is completed by the FY25-30 CIP. This project is desperately needed. It's a matter of equity and inclusion. I can tell you, I've been there myself. It needs our help and attention. It is also not ADA compliant. There are a lot of also other needs there that this students deserve a new building. The city also supports the additional funding requested to support the Crown Farm High School, which is going to have an impact on so many clusters, to fund the auditorium and other spaces, and maintains the August 2027 opening. This school will relieve pressure and the persistent overcrowding at Richmond Montgomery High School, which has more than 2,300 students. Regarding Wooton High School, we are exceedingly concerned that the planning-construction funds were removed. They are not included in the recommended CIP right now, and we implore you to add this project back and expedite the need to rebuild that building. It is currently substandard. There's two or three Instagram accounts tracking the building issues there. The city looks forward to the Phase Two project completion in August 2025, which would shift the bus driveway to the upper parking lot. We also support the prompt installation of fencing along Meadow Hall Elementary School. They had some security concerns that led to the theft of over 100 Chromebooks. We do see that there's a need to support that, as well as the digital marquee sign at that school property entrance. There are some other schools that I will send to you via email that I want to reserve for time. In closing, we also ask you to support the MCPs Materials Management Facility moving fully. We do appreciate that 100 dilapidated trails were removed from the Lincoln Park community. There's still more that needs to be done to bring affordable housing to that community. We implore you to work with the Housing Opportunities Commission and other partners who address this blighted property that's in Lincoln Park. We also support the restoration of Lincoln High School. And lastly, this is a new one. We also encourage partnership with HOC to renovate the vacant Town Center Apartments, over 100 vacant apartments sitting in Town Center that could support affordable housing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Ashton. Next, we have Mr. Nelson.
I'm Robert Nelson from Goshen and past Chair of the Up County Citizens Advisory Board. You know, we've heard a lot about the need to replace the Key Bridge in Baltimore, but in Goshen, the most urgent need is to replace the Brink Road Bridge over the Great Seneca Creek. This 54-year-old bridge, only 23 feet wide, is obsolete with outdated bridge railings raising crash safety issues. The county inspection reports are alarming. Bridge steel beams are in poor condition with areas of 100% section loss. Over 12,000 vehicles cross this bridge daily, yet this project is once again delayed until next year. We need this critical project completed this year, as was promised last year. Previous capital improvement projects have maintained traffic flow, including the Brink Road Bridge over Goshen Branch and the Davis Mill Stabilization Project, but DOT proposed a complete road closure for at least three months. So where are these 12,000 vehicles going to be going? Well, the proposed detour is nearly eight miles long. Motorists are more likely to divert onto narrow, winding rural roads that were never designed to handle this volume of traffic. Traffic will be coming through my neighborhood and using Hunt Master that has a one-lane bridge. This is unacceptable. The current intersection of Brink and Whiteman Roads just east of the Brink Road Bridge is configured as a Y. Roadway experts point out that a Y intersection could be unsafe because of the angle of entry, the potential for head-on collisions, and the possibility of drivers misjudging the right-of-way. Just before Christmas, 10 emergency units responded to an accident involving seven vehicles with multiple patients with injuries. Well, fortunately, the area next to the current Brink Road Bridge is public land, and a reconfiguration to a standard T intersection is a very feasible option. Moving the Brink Road Bridge slightly north would both allow construction to proceed without the closure of the current bridge and facilitate reconfiguration of the intersection to a standard T. For those of you who are hesitant to relocate a bridge into areas of parkland and stream valley, please remember that 13 years ago, the Goshen community was shocked when the Goshen Branch Stream Valley Park was converted into a 25-acre construction site, removing over 100 trees of over a foot in diameter. Fortunately, no trees would be impacted by moving the Brink Road Bridge slightly north. If we're going to replace the 54-year-old bridge, let's do it correctly. Yesterday, in a State of the State report, Governor Westmore said, "Maryland is a bridge between America and the rest of the world." But Montgomery County has only one bridge to Virginia. Adding a Potomac River Bridge to end the 35-mile gap between the American Legion Bridge and US 15 Point of Rocks would resolve the region's single greatest regional transportation deficiency. And finally, recent hearings have shown that completing the Mid-County Highway is a high priority for the Up County. It needs to be included in the CIP. So build the M-83 now on the master plan route. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Falcino.
Hi, my name's Barbara Falcino, and I represent the Only Civic Fund, and I'm here today to request support for two projects that are in the amendment to the CIP. One being the Only Satellite Police Station, and also the second is the Only Community Building. I have an easy ask because both projects are completely funded by state money, thanks to our state Senator Craig Zucker, several of you here. For decades, the Only Community has supported the Only Satellite Police Station through donations and fundraisers. It started out as a little trailer. We got plumbing at it. We had to do all kinds of fixes because it's been like 20 years, and it's really time for a permanent structure. The Only Community Building, many of you have marched in our Only Days Parade, is right at the corner of Spartan and Georgia Avenue. It's right where our parade ends. It's the old Capital One Chevy Chase Building. And again, it would be a place where we have meetings and gatherings and a central point within our town. So with the state money, hopefully, this is a very easy decision. Now, just to give a little background, Only is not an incorporated town, as you know, and there are three major volunteer groups that kind of oversee and advocate for Only. One is the Only Chamber of Commerce, which you'll hear from Matt shortly. The second, and they focus on business interests. The second is the Greater Only Civic Association, known as GOCA, and they focus primarily on legislation, land use, you know, being a liaison between the community and you and state officials. And then there is the Only Civic Fund, where I'm representing today. And our entire purpose is to make Only a vibrant place to live and work, and we do that by holding events like Only Days, it's Only Time. We are doing, we just had a Barrel Age Beer Fest to raise money for Only Help. We do all kinds of events, and that is really to bring people together, our businesses, our communities, and to kind of give an identity to the town. I mean, Only Days is, we're on our 45th year or something of Only Days, so it really is a bring-together-the-community event. So these three groups are primarily all run by volunteers, and we've worked for years to create a permanent police satellite substation, and we've worked for years since our 2005 master plan to get a town center, a building within the town center for our meetings. And so we request support for these two projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Whedon Hofer.
Good afternoon, President Stewart, Vice President Juwondo, and council members. My name's Melissa Whedon Hofer. I'm the Community Health Manager for WOMP Co. Help located out in Poolsville. We're a nonprofit organization that serves the five ZIP codes in western upper Montgomery County, primarily in the ag reserve. I'm here to voice support for the Poolsville area community center and clinic space that's slated to begin in 2029 and be completed in 2030, but also asking that the project be considered for funding to be moved up and included in the budget for this upcoming fiscal year. WOMP Co. clients will be served well by the clinic space, as will the rest of the community. As you know, healthcare access is a challenge for many residents in our part of the county, which has the worst healthcare outcomes in the entire county. WOMP Co.'s been working for nearly three years, offering local access to health and dental care in this area, and has seen this effort transforming community lives. We currently have a pop-up primary care partner and a mobile dental partner, and DHHS's mobile health clinic is sending out a social worker for us. So we've established that the need definitely exists for access to local primary care, dental care, and mental health services, especially for low-income and homebound residents. We're also seeing that while pop-up clinics have their place and are very useful, we believe that only the most desperate are seeking those pop-up opportunities, those that are willing to meet a doctor in a Sunday School classroom. And we do believe that another entire layer of people would make use of a clinic if they were given a legitimate designated clinic space in a professional environment that affords them the respect and dignity and privacy that they deserve. And this is really needed sooner rather than later. We see this community center clinic space as a significant benefit to our community. We can essentially plug and play all our prep work and experience with the services that now exist and insert them directly into the space. We've already identified potential clients, uncovered what needs exist, and developed relationships with provider partners. We look forward to the opportunity to be a part of a unique and effective public-private partnership sooner rather than later. Beyond the clinic space itself, the community center will improve the health of our community overall with the use of spaces for fighting isolation with socializing, trading sedentary hours for active ones, and keeping bodies and minds healthy, active, engaged, and all sooner rather than later. We ask for your support for moving up the funding and building of the community center and clinic space sooner rather than later. Thank you, and have a good afternoon.
Thank you very much. Ms. Schreiber.
Thank you very much, President Stewart, Vice President Juwondo, members of the council. My name is Mark Schreiber. I am the president of Don Bosco-Cristo-Rai High School in Tacoma Park, Maryland, and we are requesting support for the construction of a new community center that'll double as a gym and an art space at our school. We work with over 420 young people, boys and girls. It's a high school. Each of them are at or below the poverty line, first in their families to go to college. The goal of the school is to get them into and through college. Each young person contributes to the school. It's a private school right off of New Hampshire Avenue. They pay a small tuition of about $1,000 a year and then work at least one day a week, or I shouldn't say at least, but they work one day a week in a professional setting around the DMV. So on Mondays, there are no freshmen on campus. They all go to work. On Tuesdays, the freshmen are back on campus, and sophomores go to work. On Wednesdays, it's the juniors. Seniors work. On Thursday, everyone's on campus. On Friday, but there is, at this point, no gym space for home games on basketball, volleyball, or any gathering facility on the campus. And the idea is we're trying to create this space to foster community, to give our young people a chance to have athletic competitions on campus. They're busting their fanny to get through high school and then get into and through college. When they go to work on a Monday, if they're on the athletic team or basketball, soccer, whatever it is, they don't participate in the game that day because they are at work. Work is a priority. The companies don't pay. The students, they pay the school directly, which helps, in effect, the students are earning part of their scholarship to go to the school. It doesn't cover the whole cost of going to school, but it covers a chunk of it, and then we raise the rest of it. I don't know where the money comes from. I leave that all up to you all. As my colleagues up here on the committee say, I just think that when you have young people that are making the sacrifice that our students are making in order to get through high school and be the first in their family to go to college, that we don't care where the money comes from, but we hope it'll come. And I'm done. Thank you so much, Frank. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schreiber. Thank you too. Our first panel and everyone for joining us for the public hearing. Our next panel, I'll ask up Amy Akenberg-Hastings, Aaron Shapiro, Matt Quinn, and Dr. Neil Roy. And Ms. Akenberg-Hastings, whenever you're ready, you can start.
Good afternoon, President Stewart, members of the county council, and staff. My name is Amy Akenberg-Hastings. I serve MCCPTA as the Central Area Vice President for the Churchill, Richard Montgomery, Poolsville, Rockville, and Wooton Clusters, and I am the parent of an RM junior. Our communities request full funding of MCPs's requested amendments to its fiscal year 2025 to 2030 CIP. In particular, we are delighted that County Executive Elrich agrees with MCPs about increasing allocations for Woodward High School by $28 million to complete the interior of its auditorium, and for Crown High School by $20 million to finish its auditorium, shelf classrooms, labs, and stadium. Auditoriums are essential school and community spaces, so it is disturbing that Northwood High School has had to do without an auditorium while it is located at Woodward, and the problems with Woodward's Black Box Theater have just added insult upon injury. Ensuring that the auditoriums are ready when Woodward and Crown open is really the least Montgomery County can do. The Central Area is also grateful for Dr. Taylor's determination to address MCPs's substantial maintenance and system replacement backlogs through both the fiscal year 2026 Capital Budget and fiscal year 2026 Operating Budget Requests. Thus, we support the request to increase the HVAC repair and replacement line item by $4.5 million. The needs are widespread and longstanding. For example, Bayard Ruston Elementary School in the Richard Montgomery Cluster has had HVAC issues since it opened in 2018. While I am not expressing opposition to the proposed bookkeeping reallocation of $4 million away from building modifications and program improvements, I did want to stress that the BMPI program is also essential for proper stewardship of MCPs buildings. One current urgent need in the Central Area is the improperly installed failing roof at Cabin John Middle School in the Churchill Cluster. As Mayor Ashton noted earlier, our clusters understand the proposed reallocation of placeholder construction funds for four elementary schools in order to help complete and process major capital projects like the auditoriums. Nonetheless, we want to reiterate our frustration, like you heard last night, over the endlessly delayed major capital projects at Cold Spring Elementary School and Wooton High School in the Wooton Cluster and Twinbrook Elementary School in the RM Cluster. In my written testimony, I talk about how MCPs's six-year delay in updating the status of systems in each facility may impact the future of these projects, and I ask the council to help us hold MCPs accountable for transparency about when and how these schools will be renovated. Again, the Central Area clusters ask the council to approve the amendments to the FY25-30 CIP as recommended by the county executive and MCPs. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Ms. Schreiber.
Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for your hard work you do every day for the people of this county. I truly appreciate it. My name is Aaron Shapiro, the Business Development Manager for Shapiro &amp; Duncan, a three-generation family-owned construction company based here in Rockville for the last 49 years. Shapiro &amp; Duncan is one of the largest local mechanical contractors that design, builds, and maintains plumbing and HVAC systems for schools, hospitals, government buildings throughout the county and the greater Washington area. With a team of over 360 talented industry professionals, we are proud to support many families within this county. Our workforce continues to be one of the biggest challenges we face. Nationwide, the total number of job openings in the construction industry has surpassed 500,000. In the next five to 10 years, over 40% of the current workforce is set to retire. With an ever-growing industry, finding great talent is paramount. That is why our partnership with Montgomery College has been so successful. Throughout the years, Montgomery College has been a tremendous resource for not only hiring but also providing a broad range of educational platforms that serve our team. From apprenticeships to engineering, we have had our employees complete various certificate and associated degree programs in construction management, accounting, business management, computer science, architecture, and engineering. We are extremely grateful to have a community college that can support our needs as an employer. When hiring a Montgomery College graduate, we know they are well-prepared for the job. The up-to-date curriculum, the hands-on experience, and top-notch professors make it a no-brainer for employers. Later this month, four of Montgomery College's Construction Management Program students will take part in Associated Builders and Contractors National Project Management Competition against large four-year institutions. The Montgomery College team will not just participate, but they will compete, and like in past years, they might place. That is the type of talent you get when hiring a Montgomery College grad, one that's aptitude is on a national level. As an added benefit, many of the graduates grew up in Montgomery College, they live in Montgomery College, and most importantly, they want to stay in Montgomery County. At Shapiro &amp; Duncan, we have many success stories of hiring Montgomery College graduates. To mention a few, Dilma, a senior project manager, Dwight, a project executive, Sandy, our director of special projects, and Dan, our director of engineering, all Montgomery College graduates, who have grown to become leaders in our company, several of whom started as interns. I understand you have difficult decisions to make in the coming weeks to finalize your capital budget. I ask for your continued support of Montgomery College and its budget request, ensuring this exceptional institution continues to thrive and continues to provide top talent to Montgomery County employers. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn.
Good afternoon, President Stewart, Vice President Juwondo, and the rest of the council. My name is Matt Quinn. I'm the president of the Only Chamber of Commerce. The Only Chamber of Commerce, about 300 members, very diverse and thriving in the Montgomery County region. I'm here to give you a little bit of a gift, a small one, with Barbara Falcino just enunciated quite well the need and the desire to purchase the Capital One Building, which will make our civic center in Only, as well as the support for the police substation. I'll let her, her words were great. I'm going to add one thing. I would ask you to provide additional support for mental health. I think mental health provides opportunities for the business community to thrive. I think it's good for business when people are taken care of, and I think that when the local economy is doing well, the rest of the community can thrive. So that's it.
Thank you so much. And then we have Dr. Neil Roy.
Hi there. My name is Neil Roy. I'm the chief medical officer here at Shady Grove Medical Center. Thank you, President Stewart, and Vice President Juwondo, as well as the rest of the council members. As a brief reminder, Shady Grove Medical Center is the emergency department and hospital that's about two miles from here. We're one of the largest hospitals in Montgomery County. We're a not-for-profit, community-based hospital. We're the only accredited thrombectomy center for stroke care in the county, while also the largest provider of behavioral health services in the county and the second-largest in the state. I want to start by giving you a story. 30 years ago, when I was eight years old, I came to the Shady Grove ER as a patient, and it was the same ER that I work at now as chief medical officer. And when I first took this job several years ago, my first question was, you know, I think this ER needs to be replaced, you know, what's happening here? And we're in the process of getting funding for that. Thankfully, in 2021, the state approved us for $180 million to rebuild our ER and build a state-of-the-art thrombectomy center, stroke center, ICU, and emergency department that'll have all private rooms, and that cost about $180 million. From April 21 to now, costs have gone up a lot. We're looking at nearly $250 to $280 million. Our ask to this council is for $3 million. And the real reason why is we're the only stroke center in the county that does what's called thrombectomies. So if anyone in the county has a life-threatening stroke, they're going to come to Shady Grove. And four months ago, my mom had a small stroke. She came to Shady Grove, got really exceptional care, and now went to a cruise a month ago and is living her best life. Having state-of-the-art equipment in a new ER, namely CAT scanners and ultrasounds, will allow all of our patients to get faster, better, more effective care, and we're so close to be able to afford that equipment. So your support, just for that $3 million, I know it's not a small amount, really makes a huge difference in all of our lives, made a huge difference in my mother's life, my family still lives here, and any of our family members that have to go to an ER, particularly for stroke or mental health, will come to Shady Grove. And your investment will go a really long way and last a very, very long time. And your investment will go a really long way and last a very, very long time. Thank you all very much for having me.
Thank you very much, Dr. Roy. Appreciate everyone for taking the time to join us today. This public hearing is now closed. We are now adjourned until 7:00 PM this evening for another public hearing on the FY26 capital budget supplemental appropriations to the FY25 capital budget and amendments to the FY25 through 30 capital improvements program. Again, we really appreciate everyone who has been here today, and I hope it stops raining so you can get home safely. Thank you and have a good afternoon.
Been in the restaurant business since like '98 because of our parents. We were in the back peeling tomatoes, so we've been, we've been at it since we were little kids.